...for certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, 27 East 62nd Street, located within the Upper East Side Historic District. It's document number 168419, an apartment building with neo-renaissance style details designed by Lawler &amp; Haas and built 1912-1913. The application is to construct additions.
Although I actually, one of my first history presentations was about, who was that, his friends? I'm just watching the past.
These are the people you want to be, the people come up right after that.
I bought a shell.
Good afternoon, commissioners, Bernardo's Preservation Department staff. This application is for 62nd Street. The proposal has, is for two additions. The building is on the north side of the street, just a little east of Madison Avenue. So this is the building that we're looking at. The proposal is for the construction of two additions. So you can see that there is a light airwell port on the western side of the building. So they're proposing to fill this area here. There is an existing rooftop addition. The proposal also includes an existing, altering existing rooftop addition. So you can see a little bit of it in the photo on the left. The proposed one is on the right. It will be set back further from the front facade than the existing penthouse, but it will extend further towards the rear and the side facades. It will be visible from Madison Avenue and slightly farther to the west as well as it will have a view on coming from the other direction and to the east and the opposite will go through those aspects. One other thing I would like to mention is they're going to make also a modification to the parapet on the eastern side of the facade, which I'll mention as well.
Thank you, Berdette. Next new Shelley Friedman, Friedman de Gafon. We are councilors, the landmarks councilors, the ownership here. As Berdette said, this, this building at 41, it was a former residential building, is being converted to a, a corporate building. It is, it's an interesting block in that there are only four buildings on, on the north side of the block that face the, the street and three of them are already, and two of them are already commercial. There's only one residential building on the north side of the street and one on the opposite side of the street, the Browning School, the Ling's Club and other buildings. This is very much a commercial, a commercial block and has been one for, for, for many years. The application has, has three parts. One is the restoration work that's going to be taking place that the architects, David Katz and Gillan will, excuse me, will take, will take you through. Secondly, as you see, based on its old residential character, these had, this was in a standard H configuration in plan with the two light wells on the east and west sides of the building. Those light wells are no longer needed for residential purposes and so we are proposing an infill. The one on the east is, is, has been approved at the staff level because it's not visible from the public way and we have a certificate of no effect already for, for that as well. The one on the, the west, David will, will take you through, but this allows us to get the floor plan that we need to make the building work for, for corporate, for corporate home office, for corporate space. In addition, there is already a pent floor that's set back. It's a bit of a metal shack. It's not, it's too small to be, it's too large to be a penthouse. It's really just a setback floor all around. It's clad in metal, probably from what we can tell maids quarters originally in the residential building. We are retaining that. We are changing its footprint and because we need to raise the roof a couple feet, the roof of this building is also coming up, the 10th floor is coming up approximately six feet. That is, that is, those are the changes. The building comes to you with the support of the 62nd Street Association, which has submitted a letter in support of the application. It was approved at the Landmarks Committee of Board Eight by a vote of eight to one and by the full board by a vote of thirty-two to two. So we believe we've, we've, we've brought a successful adaptive reuse of a building which you saw several years ago and rejected for the work that was proposed. The resident, the previous residential owner was going to add several floors and do something to really jazz up the retail base, which we are not going to do. There are two, two retail units at the base. We are eliminating one entirely and the other will be a quiet space. We're looking for no signage, lighting or any change at the, at the ground level except to restore it to historical, to historic condition. Introduce David Katz, who's the architect of the project, who can take you through the presentation.
I think you can read.
No. I'm going too late. But I just wanted to start. So this is a building, well, it's nineteen twelve, typical private facade. The only thing I wanted to point out on this, on this photograph is that there's a strange condition right here and the reason I'm pointing out is it's going to show later. The facade on, on the west side is set back about less than two inches, so it's less than a course of brick. And I bring that up because we're trying to determine exactly how to infill that to align it with the, the brick above. We're proposing that of stocko, we're taking the coining down the side of the building. The proposed and existing facades, here, the, we're including a fair amount of restoration, replacing windows and so forth, cleaning the brick. But what I really wanted to point out here is the replacement of the cornice. The building is obviously somewhat worse for wear. The cornice is missing. There's also a number of window air conditioners and through wall A C's that are going to be removed. The facade of the building, this is the existing condition. Our building is right over here. We just wanted to make note of the fact, I mean, this is a photo montage below, it's taken from 62nd Street, but really what we're pointing out here is the amount of construction on the roof of the adjacent buildings and the fact that it's not visible. And what we're proposing, which is an enlargement of approximately five feet on the roof, in addition to some mechanical equipment, will also not be visible. Floor plan, this is at the first floor, existing and proposed. Stucco floor, existing and proposed. You can see the, the infill on the right hand side for the stair elevator. And this is the most noticeable change. This is at the ninth floor. The areaway here is which we're proposing to infill. The 10th floor, again, this is the existing plan of the building that we're regularizing and setting back several feet. We're also setting the front of the building back. And the roof plan, and the removal is below. The larger volumes are going to be on the east side, which is the east physical section of the roof. We're trying to gang up the mechanical equipment as much as possible towards the northeast side of the building where it's still visible or containing the water tower using a mechanical, a hybrid mechanical system to reduce the mechanical equipment footprint as much as possible. Here is the section, the existing section looking north and the proposed section, the section looking west and the proposed section here. And then the facade, the existing proposed, the amount that we're coming up there is the existing roof and we're coming up about five feet or so. This is, this is the facade that I mentioned in the first slide. So you can see the areaway is what we are infilling and essentially we're just, we're bringing the brick out to the same level as both flanking sides. This is that zone where we have, presently have stocko. There's this brick coining of the face brick that's turning the corner and we're bringing that down as much as possible and then infilling with stocko here. Again, this is just that, that strange condition. We're not entirely sure why it's there, but to add a brick would clearly create an additional shadow line. Here's the back of the building, which is to show we're replacing the windows and with wood double cup windows. The, the larger volume is shifted to the east side of the building where it's less visible. This view of the looking east is almost entirely invisible. The only thing to point out here is the extension of the parapet on the, on that facade, which is visible, we'll see from the, from the street view, and then these large volumes, which are not visible. Section through the 10th floor and the ninth floor roof, we're increasing the structure and insulation to, for structural reasons obviously and also for energy cover. So here is that, that same view again. So this is looking west, that's the, looking east rather, that's the areaway, that's the infill and that is the new volume that we are proposing. We're maintaining the same cladding and, or similar cladding and facing the building, we're using reclaimed windows on that volume as well. Here is the view looking northeast again with the area to play infill. Here is that stucco that I was talking about. This coining will extend down as far as it does and we're not entirely sure how far down it goes. We're going to clean the building now and re-stucco that section. These are, these are new wood windows. The view looking from the southeast, looking up at the new volume, which is located here. The parapet here is pulled back slightly. View of the mockup, which is not easily viewable, it's, it is there, they were suspended out of the ten stories. Again, looking at the, this is looking from, looking southeast of the mockup. Some of the materials we're using, we're proposing to infill with similar brick. The stucco on the, the western facade, existing barricada, wood windows, blade coated copper and the reclaimed windows, tension wire railings, make it as invisible as possible. At the lower level, we're introducing some light fixtures, which would be ripped glass. We're also replacing the steel and glass doors where they've been earlier replaced by items that were not historically accurate. The, this is a curious, well, we're replacing the cornice with what we believe to be a very close replica of what the original architect had put in. It's a little difficult to determine from the tax photo. We do have some evidence from 75th Street, a building done by the same architect that we are, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, questions?
Yeah.
Yes, John?
Can we look at page 21? The proposed on the right side there, is there a reason why we don't just go with brick all the way down below that, you know, the-
The stucco line?
The bottom half there? I mean, I like the idea that you extend the coining down all the way, but I don't, is there a reason why not go brick there?
Well, we could take brick down there. I mean, it's just, it's a very curious condition. The problem is that, you know, we have this line here that is running across the length of the building, or at least that side, so there would be an awkward, an awkward condition where the brick meets the stucco. Yeah, the brick would extend down.
I'm not, I'm-
It would be set down.
I'm sorry.
I also didn't understand.
Yeah. My question is why we don't just go brick from the-
All the way down.
Instead of having that line there, which draws attention to that side of the building, why not just keep going as far down as you can?
Yeah, the existing, this is existing stucco and it's set back less than a course of brick. So if the, if we were to clean, we would, that stucco, we could clean that stucco off, but there would be a setback there that would be less than a full course of brick back. So if we were to introduce brick in, in this, this, what we're trying to do is, is create as much of a flat facade.
Yeah, so the brick, if you did brick, it would stand proud of-
It would stand proud.
Bottom half would stand proud of the top.
That's right. That's right.
What about thin brick?
I'm sorry?
What about thin brick?
Thin brick, I guess, could be used there. I'm not a fan of using thin brick on the facade, just because it doesn't weather as well.
I agree. But it would work.
Okay. Any other questions?
It's just in terms of the, the detail that you have for the, the height of the, the height of the penthouse.
Yes.
So is the penthouse and then the other floor that were, is that, are there two floors that are there or just one?
Just one. We're, we're, we are, we will work on the roof, just as the, the, the ninth floor roof needs to be rebuilt, but the, it's the, this is the only volume.
And what's the height of that? And is it possible to have it less visible by dropping it a foot or so?
Well, we, it's going to be an event space. We have the, the interior height there is eleven feet. The rest of the dimension there is based on the, the structural ornaments and the insulation of the ornaments. So it-
But the insulation's only for that piece, right? It's not for the building?
Yeah, it's for that. It adds to that, that, the height of, of the structure, so.
Right, and given that it-
For example, that, that, that structure is, that's what I'm talking about. So, so this height is eleven feet. The structure here, this is not going to have any impact on the height, but that will-
Right, and why, okay.
The new additional height is only-
It just seems-
I'm Brian John and I'm also working, the, the new additional height they were adding is only nominally five feet higher than the top of the current penthouse structure. So it's, it's a, as you can see here, it goes from a hundred feet to a hundred and five.
Right, but it's coming clo-
Visibility, that's not what, that speed isn't the, isn't the question, it's really the, the height, what makes it that five feet? Why couldn't it be four feet?
Just to clarify how much they're adding.
So it could be four feet if it were long enough.
We tried to pare it down as much as possible.
Okay, my other question was about the, the detail of the cornice and where it came from. Is it, is it that, because you had a photograph earlier of an old cornice, was that, are any of those photographs of anything that we think is historic or-
Oh, well, I can show you from the, that, that first image is the-
Yes, what is that? Is this-
It's a curious look of the cornice, but that's the, the, that is the existing.
Yes, and what was that? What interior, what-
Well, we're assuming that it's metal. It's a, just a copper, like-
It's a, it's a dented cornice.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It's just, it's a dent-
So it's intended to match the historic conditions, being reviewed at step level? So the cornice isn't part of the public, is that they're doing restoration work with that?
Okay. Should we take testimony? Okay. Barbara Say?
Barbara Say of the Historic District's Council. HDC wishes to applaud the applicant on a very sensitive front facade restoration, including the reintroduction of the cornice and sheet metal and the cleaning and repairing of masonry. On the west elevation, the applicant is proposing to push the wall forward without changing the character of that facade, a refreshing and sensitive approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Hall?
Michael Hall, Friends of the Upper East Side. Our committee would first like to applaud the restorative work the applicant will undertake on the front facade of the building. The return of the cornice, brick restoration, limestone cleaning, return to wood frame windows and removal of window and through wall air conditioning units will make an impactful change to the south facade. We did have some reservations about filling in the western light well, especially due to its high visibility from Madison Avenue. Our committee would prefer to see some memory of the original inset condition demonstrated either through brickwork or perhaps a reduction of windows in the center bay. In addition, removal, removal of one or two lines of windows or a less regular arrangement of windows would be a more, be more appropriate for the secondary facade. Regardless, the Preservation Committee of Friends supports the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Are there any more speakers on this item? Okay, Community Board Eight also recommends approval of this project. So, all right, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, comments? I'm also, okay. All right, we're all okay as is.
So what about the things with the brick infill, only the candidates suggest, is that or maybe just-
I'll give it a listen.
It's okay with me, but others?
I think it would look better with the brick, but I'd be okay with the step, now that it's out.
But, okay, so, but let's just be clear. They can work with staff, so they could see if they can extend the brick all the way down, but if they cannot because of the-
Well, they said they could do it if, if we were, if we were okay with a step, right? Because it would be a change in plane of about an inch or so, inch or two. And I'm just saying I'm okay with the change in plane.
Or, or I think the suggestion was a veneer brick.
A veneer brick?
Well, I understand they're reticents. That's my good idea.
All right, so it would actually mean just that it's, there'll be, yeah, there'll be a plane that's slightly different, correct? Okay, and if we think that brick overall would unify the facade?
What would that mean on that fringe edge? The, no, it would stay, but-
It will go all the way to the, to that point, right?
It'd be inside a little bit.
Which, of that?
At the coins, I think at the coin-
I'm assuming from the picture, it would be better if the limestone is in plane with the brick. If the brick below it pops out a little bit, it would be popping out from the limestone too.
Yeah. That, is that-
Well, the coin's not there right now.
It is.
Just to do the clarification on the, that edge carpet, that's actually brick, face brick, it's not limestone. So it, it is coined and it does appear to be historic, but it's a brick, not limestone.
This is the coined brick, that's the coined.
Okay. All right, so they'll work with staff? We're fine with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, good, so we can close the hearing? And, Michael? Oh, I don't know if you've been already called on as yet.
I don't know, but-
Okay, I lost track.
Won't make an issue of it.
Okay.
Regarding 27 East 62nd Street in the Upper East Side Historic District, the application's to construct additions, noting that the style scale, materials, design details of the building are among the features which contribute to the special architectural historic character of the Upper East Side Historic District, I recommend approval, finding that the construction of a full height addition at the side of the building eliminating an existing utilitarian airwell and the enlargement of the existing modern rooftop addition will not eliminate any significant architectural features of the building, that the continuous lot line wall to be created by the construction of a full height addition at the side of the building will be in keeping with lot line walls at buildings of this type, style and age in terms of plane proportions, materials, finishes and details. That, the proposed masonry openings in the windows at the lot line will be in keeping with lot line openings at windows at buildings of this type, style and age in terms of placement size, basic design and remain a harmonious secondary presence in relation to the fenestration of the front facade of the building. That the enlargement of the rooftop addition will only be visible over secondary facades within the context of varied streetscape view, including taller neighboring buildings, that the modified, that the modifications to the existing rooftop addition will regularize its form as seen from Madison Avenue and further westward, helping it to remain a background element within a street, within streetscape views. The simple design and neutral finish of the enlarged rooftop addition will be in keeping with such aspects of the rooftop accretions typically found throughout the district and further help it to receive from view. The applicant will work with staff to either extend the brick down or not, based on staff's discretion.
I'm fine with that. Okay. All right, very good, all in favor? Any opposed? The application's approved.
It is not so much for its effect on the school buildings themselves as for its impact on views of the individually landmarked Friends Meeting House for points in the square and the Historic District generally. Unfortunately, the aggressively contrasting glassy stair tower has been located so that it looms over the Meeting House. If there is a prospect of interior demolition, there might be a way to move the stair tower farther away from the Meeting House, preserving the impression of classical unity and peaceful existence that the building has had for much more than a century. Stuyvesant Square need not fall a victim to doctrinaire preservation policies that would clearly differentiate the new work from the protected buildings at the expense of visual compatibility with a resulting loss of historic character for the district viewed as a whole and for the individual landmarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Sisi Kamal?
My name is Sisi Kamal. I'm the Chief Financial and Operating Officer at Friends Seminary and I first want to thank all of you for taking time for reviewing this project. As someone who is responsible for the operation of the school overseeing that along with what goes on inside the school, I'm more than proud to say so much time has been spent on really designing a structure that is in harmony with the Stuyvesant. And Francis has walked you through some of the plans and I'm a little bit surprised at the objections that have been made on personal levels that is expanded to the institution. If I just look at this picture as I'm sitting in the back, what really captured me is really, you step away from far even from this picture, you could see very little change or overwhelming addition. What is become, looking overwhelming from me is the 200 building, it's 16th Street, which is, really stands tall against what the rest of the facility is. I'm just, in the back, I was stunned. So I think if I was someone who was really concerned about these kind of properties, I would object myself, being, living in those apartments and objecting to the view. One of the things that we've spent a lot of time and Francis had in your pictures, maybe we can go back to, is the backyard picture today versus what it's going to be. It's actually going to look much cleaner, much more organized, it's going to look green and in harmony with the rest of the building. You know, it's, it's, right now is in pieces and structures over the buildings, but when you look at that picture, you could see how even the front and the back works together. One of the things I wanted to share with you, references made to the staircase and the previous renovation that Friends have done. To our surprise, as much as we were very proud of the renovation that we did, we received a newsletter of the community that indicated how grateful the community was of the addition and they awarded us for that renovation that we did. And we work very hard to take our responsibility seriously and to do our best with our neighbors and the community and I think we are a good shepherd of what we stand for. And I thank you for supporting this project and we hope and look forward to be working with everyone to get this project done. Thank you.
Thank you. I think if, if there are representatives of Friends that are part of the development team, then instead of testifying, they should really be with the team over here to speak on it. So she's, I think, right, she's, she's with Friends, correct? Works for Friends?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Denise Ferris? Denise Ferris, sorry.
Yes, thank you. My name is Denise Ferris. I'm an architect and I just want to say I'm in support of the project. I think it's a very sensitive treatment of the historic buildings and it's a balancing- act, working with historic fabric and working with the realities of living today, and the fact that they've, the architects are making these historic townhouses accessible to handicapped, people with handicaps, is significant impact for the community, for the Friends Seminary School, and is a positive for, for the architecture. Thank you.
Thank you. Jarrett Wolfman?
Hello, thanks for having me. I'm a resident, 20 years of 207 East 15th Street, and I guess I'm here as a representative of them. And I just want to say that we're concerned that these proposed changes may not be in keeping with the historic nature of the district. I was reading the, I don't know if you call it the Declaration, whatever it was that created the district, that you guys created, well, not you specifically, but, you know, whoever did it. And I noticed that they commented on how, you know, when part of what makes a district special is its residential, you know, that it's a residential community, which I thought was interesting. And I just wonder, you know, at what point does the expansion of the school, and, you know, I don't know when they moved into those three townhouses, but residents were displaced when that happened. And, you know, part of me feels like that's kind of a shame, because, I mean, this wouldn't be the first time that we saw private schools spreading and taking over what should be, I think, a residential neighborhood. And I think that might, I'm not sure exactly, but I feel like maybe that is a part of your preview, purview, I'm sorry, to keep that in mind. I don't know for sure, I'll leave that up to you, but, yeah, I guess that's it. All right, thanks.
Catherine Evans?
Catherine Evans?
Thank you very much. I'm here to speaking as a parent at Friends. I would just like to say that it is a real challenge for our students and for our parents to navigate what is not inaccessible, a third of our campus, and that we really look forward to this redevelopment so that the campus becomes accessible. We have students in inappropriately sized classrooms, in someone's bedroom, in someone's breakfast nook, and that the creation of appropriately sized classrooms and facilities will make a huge difference to the quality of the education. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Khan?
Hi, I'm Eric Khan, and I'm a parent of a child at Friends. And when we were looking at schools for our children, we love what we heard and saw at Friends, but we had to give it serious consideration, because a school doesn't really work physically. It's very difficult to get around. We don't have all the facilities for our children going forward, so we feel this is a necessary construction project. On top of that, I've heard a lot of opposition about the integrity of the neighborhood, but I think really what's being talked about here is the loss of views and market value. So, my apartment building across the way, we had a river view, and they put up a building by New York Hospital, and we lost what river view we had. And looking out the window, we rarely even notice that it's gone, and our apartment is now worth more than it's ever been worth. I think the people here who are opposing this are really doing it because they feel they're losing value in their apartments, and their apartments are worth more now than they've ever been. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Levine?
Good afternoon, thank you for having us, and thank you for hearing us. I'm Wendy Levine, I am associated with the school, I am the parent of two graduates. I am extremely familiar with the campus, I've worked on this project in addition to other renovations. I believe that what we are able to provide in this new circumstance would be, yes, accessibility, not just for students, but for families, so that if a parent comes to a presentation, they can access a presentation or a meeting because of what we hope to create in level floors and an additional elevator. Secondly, I think we have taken great steps to consider the view, the impact from the street, and we have tried very hard to organize the roofs so that they are appealing to look when you look down. But in fact, there is a reality in New York City schools, people who are objecting who live on 15th Street, look, live in 60s built buildings that are hardly architectural contributions to the neighborhood. The fact is that we purchased the townhouses, not at the expense of other residents, anyone else could have bid on the same townhouses that we did, but we have an opportunity to create for our 750 schools, a school of the future, and that's an obligation, it's a fiduciary responsibility of the administration and the governance of the school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tyler Donaldson?
Hello, I also am affiliated with the project. I'm an architect, and my firm has been engaged as the owner's representative of the project. Obviously, I'm speaking in favor of the project, but I want to note that I believe...
I'm sorry, what?
You've been hired by, you're working for the project, right? So technically, you should be up here as part of the team as opposed to testify.
Peter Wilkens, should we be...
Okay, we'll deal with that, we'll deal with that, just...
Point that out.
Should I start?
And they're even allowed to speak.
Okay, I will stop there.
Okay, Sherry S. Lou Clown? I'm sorry, I didn't get that right, it's the wrong, sorry, right, I'm getting it right.
Good afternoon, I'm a resident at 230 East 15th Street, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I am opposed to this project. I purchased my home at 230 East 15th Street in great deal because of the community and the historic value in the community that I enjoy as a resident. I love the way the community appears, I love the way the buildings look, I love being across the street from Friends, and I've enjoyed listening to their children play. I don't understand why they have given a great deal of time to this project and never came into the community and told us anything. We heard about this because we got a flyer in our building from someone in the community that said this was happening. We had no other notification. I don't feel that's a responsible attitude coming from this school or being a part of the community.
Please continue.
I also keep hearing that this is a not-for-profit school, and I do appreciate that, and I do, again, love that they're there and part of the community, but we pay taxes and are supporting part of what's happening in New York and need to be considered as part of the neighborhood. I have pictures on my iPhone where you look from the park and you see these structures. Right now, we're looking at orange netting. I don't even know when it was approved for Friends to raise the play yard that they call it, a metal structure on top of their buildings. None of this is in keeping with the neighborhood or the style of the buildings, and I'm terribly distressed, and I would like you to please take into consideration what I've said. Thank you.
Tommy Komitzis and Lydia Komitzis. Oh, they're not here, okay. Age eight and age six, okay, and they're speaking against the proposal, all right. Cynthia Coker?
Hi, my name is Cynthia Coker. I've been a resident at 216th for 16 years, and I'm against this proposal. I feel it has a negative impact on the distinct character of our neighborhood. Even though it will disrupt my standard of living and that of my public school-educated child for the next three years, I have no objection to any of the internal improvements that the school wants to make. Modernizing their teaching models and their standards all seems very reasonable, and any internal improvements they want to make also seems reasonable. The height and the visual obstruction of the 16.9, and then the architect then said 17 feet, that extensive play area and skylight does not contribute to the significance of the neighborhood, it does not enhance the historic nature of the neighborhood, it does not improve the neighborhood at all. In fact, it's the opposite, it detracts from every aspect of this historic neighborhood, and it's outrageously self-serving. And when I listen to what the principal said about why this is happening and what the needs of this project are and the needs of your children, there is nothing about this 17-foot play area or skylight that is aligned with the needs of your children or is aligned with the Quaker mission or the, the mission of the school itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Callis?
Is it Margaret or Chris?
Is this Margaret, or is it you?
Chris.
Sorry. Good morning, everyone. I represent four generations of residents and owners of 200 East 16th Street. When it came time to look at nursery schools, we had two choices in the neighborhood. One was Jack and Jill over at St. George's, and the other one was Friends Seminary. From a landmarks' point of view, I have looked at this area. If you go back to the Library of Congress photos of 1934, you will see this pristine meeting house of the Quakers in this area. Then along came a Helmsley Building that you see here, that violated the entire character of this area. That was a mistake. That should have never happened. It should have been within the theme of the entire neighborhood, but maybe there wasn't a landmarks' law to protect it. So, this continuing of a mistake is what has happened here. What I would propose is that we have no building, that we change the facade of the existing building to somehow match the character of the neighborhood that I grew up in. The other fact of the matter is that there's been a lot of people with personal testimony here. We had Sissy, the CFO. There are New York City development bonds that have paid for this expansion, that paid for the first set of expansions, and that is a significant part of all of this. This is New York City funds that have, could have gone to other types of nonprofits, that's assuming they are a nonprofit, which we have hard find, a hard time finding their 501(c)(3) status. The other thing is that you've heard here is admissions of how they botched the first phase. They're trying to correct things that they already messed up before. What's happened is their floors are out of line. What they've tried to do is take a fire-resistant building, which they built, that Helmsley built, and extend it into this group of row houses that were non-fire resistant, which is very difficult to begin with. This task shouldn't have been undertaken to begin with. They should have looked for another location to expand their school into. They never did. We've asked them three, four times, they never even thought of it. So, what I'm saying is, go with my proposal. Don't increase it. Change that facade so it looks something like it should have in 1934. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Callis?
My name is Margaret Callis. I'm, as a resident since 1948 of this landmark area, in other words, I'm almost as old as the landmark buildings themselves. I feel that a certificate of appropriateness should only be granted to Friends Seminary on condition that the massive rooftop structures on top of Hunter Hall and the row houses is eliminated. The present plan impedes the view of the National Landmark St. George's Church from 15th Street, the mass of the structure overshadows the Quaker Meeting House building, it is not in keeping with the 19th century feeling of the rest of the designated district. Either we take the original idea of the importance of the preservation of landmarks seriously, or we lose their historic value. Just because Friends has the money and would rather build up than explore other more responsible options does not mean they should have the right to selfishly consider only their wishes at the expense of the preservation of our collective history. The rule of the LPC, the rules of the LPC were put in place specifically for these situations, but it is up to you, the current commissioners, to enforce them. Thank you for giving this is your serious consideration.
Peros Komitzis?
Thank you. Hi, my name is Peros Komitzis, and I live at 216th Street. I took a couple photographs from around the neighborhood, trying somehow to get a visual understanding of what actually is going to happen. Looking from the plans, I was unable to establish an idea of how high it would be. My building on the photographs, in one of the photographs that appears on the proposal, appears to have 19 floors, and the other appears to have 20. So, I couldn't really assess how high this building would be based on the area. So, on the first photo that you see there, I have put on red circle a little structure that appears in the corner between the two rooftops where they meet. That structure appears to be on the second page, is the edge of this accessory to the number 214 East 16th Street, is one of their townhouses. It's already visible, and I know this area is going to be used either for the sky room or one of the elevators wells that is going to go up, and it's going to go up about three and a half floors. So, this is barely one floor high right now, and it's going to go another two and a half. So, I'm not sure, I'm not an architect, and I can't really assess what actually is going to happen there, I'm not sure what I would be looking in three years. I just, I'd like to point out my point of view and what I saw there. In addition, I added a couple more photographs from the area. There is one or two shots from 16th Street and 3rd Avenue, the northwest corner already, what's meant to be built on the two townhouses, visible from that angle, again, from the park. It's clear visible that's going to be, something, something's going to be present there in the future. In addition, the scale, I believe, in my opinion, the scale of the, the height is going to take over, as many other speakers said, presence from the meeting house and St. George's Church's presence of the area. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Christopher Callis? You've, is there another Christopher Callis?
No.
You've spoken before?
I spoke before.
Okay, okay, all right, great. Lavor Kellner?
Thank you for the opportunity to address this group. I wanted to mention some of the things that have come up in testimony that I think are public... public statement that should be addressed. One, public school versus private school. I live between Tribeca and Fidi, the financial district. I think we know the expansions that the public schools are going through. So the fact that a private school wants to improve its facilities, I think, is of equal situation to the public school. Progress will happen. I lost my windows. I'm not happy about it. And I've noticed that everyone who opposes this project has failed to mention their views. The only person who mentioned it other than myself is a gentleman who is for the renovation and is a member of the Friends community. So while Friends has been attacked for integrity, I would like to shed light on the fact that I think there are a group of people who are quoting historic interests of the area. I don't know how many of them are on other Historic Landmarks Committee or belong to the National Association of Landmarks, et cetera. But it doesn't seem like there are a lot. The views from the street, which people have graciously addressed, when you look at those plans versus what plans could have come through, because everything is as of right. Excuse me? Everything.
Let her speak.
Everything is as of right within the zoning information. We're not asking for exceptions. Additionally, my child, I pay dearly, I might add, to go to the school. And I'm not happy that her high school years will be spent under construction. However, her best friend is in a wheelchair and may not graduate. She is unable to attend classes with her classmates. There have been other children, I can't talk on that subject because it's gut-wrenching. There are other students who have sustained injuries, be it on the school teams or be it outside of the community, and end up temporarily in wheelchairs. They too are unable to participate. We will adhere to all fire codes. We are trying to make this more ADA compliant and provide what we think is important, which is the opportunity to have an education for those that belong to the school. And I hope that this committee will recognize that we're trying to improve lives, not just protect the value of our real estate views. Thank you.
Susie Kim. Susie Kim.
I'm Susie.
Okay. Corey Norton.
She means Carrie Norton and I mean support the project.
Okay. Annie Harper.
I'm Austin.
We're taking this all down, right? Yeah, okay. John Galida.
I'm Stuart Brown.
Samantha Pribish.
I'm Scott Brown.
Leah Johnson.
Do you have anything to add?
If you're going to speak longer, just come forward, please. Yes.
Good afternoon, all. I just wanted to say, as a parent of an upper school student at Friends Seminary, I do support the project.
Okay, all right. Sean Kusandi.
I'm Christopher.
Oh, okay. All right, let me put that aside. Are there any other speakers on this item? Any other speakers? Okay. Yes, would you like to come up, Frances? So I know they're hurt. Just one more thing. Let me just note that Community Board Six has given a resolution that they support the project and is aware that Friends Seminary will continue to reach out to the community through the activation of the website and updated information on the project and communication with Community Board Six. This is during construction of the project.
What is the Royal College Community Board Six? How's the numbers?
Thirty-two in favor, zero opposed, three abstentions. Okay, all right. Okay, now, yes. I'm sure that many of us have questions, questions for the applicant. Yes, Michael.
A couple of questions. Explain a little bit why you chose not to go down under the existing buildings, not to fill in the court, not to take some solutions that might have taken a little bit of pressure off the need to extend vertically.
Sure. So the courtyard is the only play space that the students have right now, which is, it's all of that. It's shared by the meeting and by the school. The meeting is very conscious of their light, so there's no way that we could have, well, gone up in that place. All of the mechanical equipment that supports a great deal, this is now built beneath the courtyard. So in order to build under the courtyard, we would have had to remove the entire mechanical system and put it back, I guess. And then there are really very, very few spaces that would be appropriate for student life that could be without natural light. I think the connection between Quakers and light is not.
Is there, I was noticing in the plan that some of the spaces, they're not labeled, but they don't look necessarily like classroom spaces. How much of the new addition is classroom space and how much of, let's say, the reworked? I mean, it looked like in the townhouses that there was a large portion of spaces on some of the intermediate floors that was not devoted to classrooms but to smaller spaces.
No, what's beneath, there's a dance studio and a yoga studio. Those are the only things we could find that could be without light. But all of this is classrooms and there are a couple of administrative offices. I couldn't tell you the exact proportion.
Okay. And putting structures in the backyard behind the townhouses? I mean, above the?
Which way should I go?
The great room, whatever you're calling it, the assembly space?
Okay, yeah. So I think part of the feasibility of the entire project is the as-of-right ability to build in the backyard. So being able to gain one big space back there, I think, was very important to the school. And what I was trying to say before about community was that then everybody looks out onto a common space. So this was in some ways the key to the whole.
But extending the structure further out that way was something you would have had to pursue a variance for.
No, but then, oh, then this is.
He's saying above the 23.
Above the 23.
Right.
Oh, no, but then you start to cut out light from the very rooms that you're trying to create there. So if we were up to the property line, we would have no possibility for windows. So I think that was, we looked at this in a number of different ways.
But following on that, can we just follow on that? If you just go to the plans for a second, just to clarify. Let's say the second floor and the third floor plan.
Page sixty, page fifty-nine.
Sure, okay. Close your eyes, it's going to make me dizzy to get there. I should say too, by the way, these are our, we had a whole series of drawing, of, you know, views that we didn't show them in the interest of time. We're happy to share them. Second floor plan, also, I'm going to interrupt once more too. The lockup shows what you can see from the street. There's been a lot of testimony about how the lockup isn't true, but it is. Now, second.
Let's say that.
Sure.
So you're proposing to remove the back of the three townhouses and the bays, but it seems, and this is small, but it seems that you're only gaining by moving that wall, and you're moving that exterior wall or series of walls, looks like maybe five feet. Is that right?
Exactly.
But, and you're losing that back facade. So it's, which has some quality about it, even though it's not seen from the street. So I wonder, in what sense, to what extent was that, did you work on that? The possibility of not losing that back facade? Would that have meant not being able to, I mean, can you just take us through that bit right there? It's a little bit unclear.
Well, so actually, our object was to create as much interior space as we could without having to add a seventh floor, for instance. So the gain of five additional feet, which is, raises up to the leading rear yard, was a net gain that helped us to create larger classroom spaces inside. I'm not sure how else I can.
Right, but isn't it partly also because for other reasons you have shifted the floor plate that would otherwise go to the full extent from the front, right? It's almost like you've pushed the whole floor plate back. And I'm just wondering whether, is there a way to negotiate what's happening in front without sort of taking away or have any kind of visual marf from the streetscape side, where you can still manage to connect to your floors and then retain the wall at the rear? Right? Because you haven't really gained in terms of square footage. You've just moved one 10 feet on one side and 10 feet on the other side.
But in the front, it makes possible bringing light into all those spaces that otherwise. Once you line up these floors.
Right. You just have to.
It's dominated by this, which is 40,000 feet. So when these floors line up with these, then the windows shift. So that was our solution.
Right, but why lose the rear facade, the rear wall of the townhouses? I mean, if you're shifting the floor plate, makes sense.
I guess, I mean, our line of reasoning was that you, well, the two stories of it are gone because we've created a new great room down there. So then there are two more floors above that and then we're putting two new floors on top of that. So there was so little left that we thought it's better to create a uniform piece of construction. And that was how we were thinking about it.
Can you just talk a little bit about, I think, one of the issues that came up, which I think it'd be helpful to hear, how you feel that the two pieces are connected? Is the transition between the individual landmark, which is the Quaker house, and the modern building?
Um.
And maybe the, where are we? Maybe the other view's a better view to show.
Backyard?
Not the backyard. It's really where the, I'm sorry?
The park.
Yeah, from the park.
From the park, okay. Oh, a perspective from the park.
Well, it's just, you can use, right. I'm just trying to think about, you have this, sort of this designated landmark and then you have the modern building and you have this transition. And I think this is the most, because it's in front of the park, see, there's in fact a lot of visibility, but it's also the fact the new addition is not only relates to the streetscape, but relates to the individual landmark. And I think, you know, from the side street, I think, at least for me, the bulk on the modern building doesn't particularly trouble me, but I think that just this transition seems like it could be more finessed and maybe more sensitive or pushed back. I don't know if you've, you know, looked at that.
No, we've worried about that a lot. So starting here, this is the existing elevator bulkhead, so there's already something poking up above the landmark. And the bulkhead is, it's a gray metal. I'm not sure what it's made out of. And then we're seeing a little piece of the glass stair. I know there was some criticism of the glass stair, but the glass stair exists and was approved by the commission in 2007, I think. So our idea was extend the glass stair, I'm sorry, we don't see it in this drawing. And then extend the bulkhead material up again. I can correct you now. But just to answer your question, we were, in our view, the bulkhead was less obtrusive if it was gray metal and just looked like a.
So the bulkhead, so that is the bulkhead that exists and that's the one that is extruded out? Oh, is that correct?
Yeah, this one exists and so we, here it is again. And so we thought, we tried it as glass and that seemed to be more dominant and rude, but.
And that takes you all the way to the roof level. So its height is determined very much by the number of floors that you add on to the 60 building.
Yes, because the playroom requires two entrances and the exits have to be.
Right, and this is kind of your, this is the core, is that right, essentially?
Yeah.
This is the core. So you have the core at the angle, right?
So here it is again. This is the glass stair and the bulkhead behind it. So we continued some of that glass and, yes.
Okay.
I wish we could have an open stair, that would solve a lot of problems.
Okay, other questions?
Ask a kind of organizational one. What's the, pardon my ignorance on it, but what's the relationship of the school to the meeting house? As a kind of business relationship? Is it the same? Is it different? Is it affiliated?
The school and the New York Quarter.
Yes.
The New York Quarterly Meeting is comprised of five different meetings around the boroughs and it owns and operates the school.
So the school is the same entity as the meeting house?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm no lawyer, but that would be my.
I have one more question. Yes, sure. And then after Roberto.
So the meeting house is kind of integrated into the school programmatically as well as administratively?
Yes. Thank you.
One more question. Have you considered something that's a bit odd, but raising the courtyard ground, that first story up and having its roof be the courtyard?
No, because that, to do that would be to block all the light of all of the surrounding structures on the first floor. It would mean rebuilding the basement anyway, because you can't just, you know, build on nothing. So it would defeat the purpose of creating a community around the courtyard.
On that level, not on the set, not on the next level. I mean, the next four levels.
Destroy the meeting house, is what it would be.
Would it? I can't.
That would be the real sacrifice.
Can we look at, see the interior of that?
Because the meeting, the meeting is a two-story space and if you cut off one story.
I just couldn't see the back elevation of the meeting hall. So take me through it. Go ahead.
I'm going to tell.
There was a back picture, I think.
Yeah, this one is two stories. Thirty-one.
About thirty-one. I should say that we spent a lot of time working with the meeting about, actually, yeah.
I was trying to figure out where the, is that?
About their losing their light and so on. And so, well, so the meeting continues around like this. If we were to raise all of this, everything on the first floor loses its light and it would.
Just point to it. The first, at this point, so the meeting house is on the right, those are the windows of the actual interior of the meeting room?
Well, actually, the meeting's behind us, but it looks exactly like this. Yes. And it's two stories.
I see, and it starts there?
Yeah.
This is, okay.
Yeah. That would be, there's no way to consider a project like that without starting over again and demolishing 17,000 square meters of space. I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to build with what we had and while, if you look at that very first, one of those first slides of mine, the commission is saying, you know, how about thinking of replacing the Hunter Hall? That's 40,000 square meters of space just to say, poof, it's gone because we don't like what it looks like. It's not, we can't do that. So we had to work within the conditions we had. I think what we looked at, I should say, is we had to put seven stories up instead of six and we all felt that that was really just too much and we should.
I think it seems the other issue is just, I mean, the idea of going below grade and taking off the bulk from the top, I don't know if that addresses what you're necessarily trying to do. If you're creating, it's in more classrooms that you're, there's a circulation issue that you're trying to address as a part of this. And you're also increasing the space. So I guess the question is, if one even sort of figures out a way how to deal with the meeting house and its light, it really means that the space becomes below grade and just may have limited light. And I don't know if that works with them programmatically.
I think we saw that in the school in 94th Street, that we raised its play area one level, same thing you just mentioned.
I think we've done a lot of New York City schools too and we've never found anything to put in the basement of a school. It doesn't.
Right, unless it's like auditorium space or something. Okay, yes.
And you looked at the seven-story option. What happened with some of the other elements that, I mean, were you able to reduce or, you said you looked at it and you thought it was too tall, but you've got a lot of bulk going on here, so it has to be some way to, you know, address it. bulk going on here, so it has to be some way to, you know, address it. So I was just wondering what happened with that version as far as the...
I think what happens, we all looked at it and said, this is too tall. And we also, we at one point tried to have a second basement as well, under the existing buildings, and the water problems and the foundation problems were also huge.
There could be structural issues, yeah.
So I think the school started out looking at, when we did a program study, we thought it'd be wonderful to have thirty thousand square feet of space. We ended up with twenty-two thousand square feet of space, so that was, I might call it a compromise, but that's what we ended up with.
All right, other questions? Yeah, Roberto.
So besides doing the floor adjustment for the town, over the townhouses, what is actually in there? So you do the floor adjustment, you make it higher. What, what's the function of those other, of whatever else you do there?
Okay, so today, the townhouse is used as classrooms, so they're, you know, little bedrooms and little rooms that are labeled as classrooms. So those rooms are three or one.
No, I mean the top part.
Oh, just the top, oh, okay.
So is it just to do the...
So first, we get the classrooms to be bigger, and when you get to the, to the, there are more, I want to point it, the sixth floor is also more classrooms.
Yes, not, yes, I'm just talking about the townhouse part. I'm just trying to understand it, what, what is really in there that's functional? Or is it just height?
This is the greenhouse, is that what you're...
It's a greenhouse, and it's just a greenhouse. There's nothing else there.
There's some mechanical equipment, sorry. There's some mechanical equipment sitting on the roof behind the greenhouse, and then this is letting light into the sixth floor.
And, and when you, and looking through those windows from the street, now what will pass or by, see? When they look in, when you're walking by, is that light? What do you see? Is that glass setback? Is that a glass wall? Is that a solid wall? What is that?
It's about fifty-fifty. It's about half-solid and half-glass. I don't think it'll be visible from the street at all, frankly.
But if you have, if you have lights on, on the inside, and it's just windows every so often, you'll see them. I'm saying, talking about the second wall, not the...
Yeah.
So...
Well, you know, I don't have to answer that, because if you, if you're walking on the street, you look straight in at the first floor, you can see the whole first floor.
But you'll see the, you'll see the floor, you'll see the floor dividing in this space, right?
You'll see, you'll be, the balcony blocks part of your view, so, and then as you look further up, yes, you'll see, I guess if you look forward.
But you'll see the floors.
No curtains and no fritting and no anything except separating you, you would see the windows inside, yeah. I think we're, we're very much trying to create a twenty-first century school, I have to say that. We're not creating a nineteenth-century residential area, and at some point, we really have to make the school have its own integrity and its own functionality. And our view of this was to sit back from the street and then create a truly modern school inside of this. To talk about replacing Hundred Hall with, you know, more townhouses, I think, the school's been there for hundred-and-fifty-five years, and it grows within the historic district, and that's what we're trying to do. We're also trying to very much keep you outside, as little change, well, especially here, as little change as possible, but when you're in the courtyard, we really want you to feel that you're in a school and not in a place made up of a kind of assembly of buildings that have been collected over time.
Yes, Michael.
Would it have been possible to take the stair bulkhead as it descends beyond the existing glass structure and blend it into the new addition? Have it shift over?
I'm sorry, say that. No, because...
What was there originally?
You have to put the sand to...
No, I know, but if it, if it, could it have shifted to within the new construction on the west side of that demarcation line between the glass and the brick, such that, right?
Sure.
No, to the right, to the west.
To the right.
Could it have shifted so that the bulk of the addition did not, was not as close to the existing historic structure as it is currently shown there?
There would be some loss of progress...
No doubt about it.
But it could, yeah, I mean, it's probably genetically impossible, yeah.
It just gives some, I think, like breathing space something.
I'm just asking, you know, one of the issues that, that I think you raised was the proximity of the stair bulkhead to the historic structure, and I was just wondering if that's feasible.
Because in fact, we tried to do, we'd already tried to get back to duty to do exactly what I think you're...
I mean, another question is, is if, what, explain to me the relationship in terms of program between the courtyard, which has a, looks like an astroturf surface on it, play in...
Yeah, we wish.
Or whatever, green painted concrete surface, and the play roof.
Ah, I have to turn to both of them. Same as it is today, but...
Right.
I think there are some drawings that give you a sense of the inner courtyard, is what we call it, and it really does run to the wall of the beating house and to the wall of the central building which faces fifteen Rutherford. So I, I actually appreciate the suggestion that we look at that, that we have, but because of where the windows are, you would obstruct a whole first floor of windows if we, even with the Quakers' permission, tried to do a, a building there. That wasn't your question, but I wanted to, to mention it. The play roof is for a certain age group and older children to practice. We tend to keep our younger children in the playyards at ground level, and with seven-hundred-and-fifty students, every piece of outdoor ground space is important. And indeed, much to Francis's dismay, we have basketball hoops in the central courtyard, and that is the one outdoor space that our older kids have access to. The younger ones fill up all of the rest, pretty much all day.
Okay. Other questions? Are there any other questions? All right, thank you, Francis. We can go to discussion.
All right.
The world was sort of confronted with interesting, complex sites, and I think this is one of them as well, since it has many aspects to it. It has the fact that you have an individual landmark sitting on a portion of the site. You have the historic district. You have the development history of this block, including a modern nineteen-sixties building, and they're all being used essentially by the same institution. And there does seem to be, even though much was not said about the programmatic needs, but I think the commission recognizes that we see schools expand and, and try and modernize and incorporate modern-day programs for education and pedagogy. So I think, you know, I respect that. I, just gauging from the presentation, this is a sort of complex, I think, quandary of how do you try and get the programmatic needs given some of these competing interests? And I think that, in general, I think the direction that they're trying to go with speaks to issues that the commission clearly thinks about, which is the modern structure can perhaps take more bulk, that amongst the townhouses, try and bring back its historic fabric, which is very positive. If you're putting in addition to that, make sure it's not visible from the streets, so it doesn't attract from that. So I think those elements, I think, are the right site planning or architectural solutions that could work and are appropriate. I think my concern is really about something that I've already highlighted, which is about this transition, and this is, I think, the commission's always confronted with the issue of bulkheads, because they always have to go higher, bigger, and at locations where it's hard to hide them. But I think in this particular case, because it seems to be, you know, maybe logically at the right location, it suddenly, I think in my mind, somewhat conflicts unfortunately with the fact that you have a low-scale historic building. And, and I think that, I appreciate Michael's suggestion about trying to find a different way, even if it takes away some of the program space, but overall will really, I think, work out better and is a better resolution to, to a portion of this complex which is most visible. So I, at least I would want them to continue to work on that. I think that the other issue, there, we've heard some comments about, you know, flagpoles and some of the things that I think can be worked on, but I think the other issue that I'm just curious about, and I'm not definitive, is on the row houses themselves and the rear yard, rear yard buildings, and whether there is a way to at least recall some of where it was historically. And I think we, there's a suggestion about that from testimony. I know that Commissioner Shamir Barons, I think, raising that issue as well, and maybe that's something that we, could be considered as well. So I, in my mind, I feel that certain aspects could be re-studied, and I think that situation, if they're, the design is refined, I think I could find a way that this, this proposal could be appropriate. Other comments? Yes?
I just, I think we should acknowledge the biggest picture of all, and that is that we're living in a city which is growing a million people over twenty years. We have incredible growth pains everywhere we look to accommodate this, and I would say particularly, it seems, in the schools. I don't know of a school that's not massively overcrowded, unless we're just to lock the doors and say, nobody else can, can live here anymore. We have to figure out a way by which we can all grow. It's very difficult to grow, but it's more difficult to shrink. So we have a, we have the opposite problem than we had in the sixties and seventies, but it's a problem, and the problem is exacerbated immeasurably, I think, in historic districts. And I can't think of an institution that is within a historic district that is predominantly a residential district that, that conflict is not made the greatest. So we just have to accept that it's a, it's a, it's a big problem. My, but accepting that and acknowledging that allows me to think about several aspects of this project that, under other circumstances, I might have trouble with, but I'm not having trouble with here. I can accept the idea of leveling the floors within the, within the three-townhouse and setting back. I think that's something that we often don't do, but I can accept it here as a, as a rational way of dealing with a very difficult and troubling problem for the school right now in, in allowing access into space they already have, but they can't use properly because it's not accessible. I can accept, a little bit reluctantly, but I can accept the idea of the rear, partly because it is in the rear and not visible from the public, public way, the whole aspect of the rear, meaning loss of the individual townhouses and the five-foot increase. I think it's a rational way of achieving pretty much invisibly floor area and a rational circulation system. What I'm having a lot of problem with is what you see from the outside, particularly from the park, and it's particularly seen on forty-three and forty-four. And maybe there is another ingenious way that this very ingenious and capable architect can come up with, but it's that bulkhead, which the chair mentioned just a minute ago. And for the moment, I'm thinking, unless something can be done to really mitigate it, that the entire sixth floor above the Harry Helmsley Building, I'll say, is, to me, the problem. The fifth floor, by the way, the addition of the fifth floor, fine, and even, by the way, the addition on top of the townhouses, because they rake back, yes, minimally visible, but that's okay, too. It's that, it's that sixth floor above the so-called Helmsley Building that I think is the problem. And I think if that could either go away or make it invisible, I could accept all these other things that might be troublesome under other circumstances, but given the circumstances, I could accept in this case.
Other comments? Yes, Diana?
I was just going to say, I do certainly concur with Fred's comments about the things that need to be addressed. I mean, sorry, I do concur with Commissioner Bland's comments about the things that need to be addressed, and I do, I do think the floor variation is okay and so forth, and I, I could go along with the rear, because it's not visible of the townhouse as being reconstructed in order to achieve some, even though I would rather that not happen, but we do see a huge number of schools, and they do need to expand, and we do try to accommodate that, but in this case, the bulk and visibility of this is just so great that I am troubled by it, and I really think it's really got to be reduced in bulk and visibility from my perspective in order for me to be able to approve the project. And I'm not able to make the suggestions as to how that might be achieved. I mean, one of them, just Fred just made, that is, could be helpful, certainly.
Okay. Other comments? Yes?
I wish I was as accepting as you guys, I'm sorry. I wish I was as accepting as, as you, I guess, I have a different view on it. I personally find the, the, I mean, it's all about real floor area, right? We need, the school needs to add floor area. The commission has certainly been more than generous, I think, in the past in looking at other private schools, including some, some designed by this applicant in other locations in the Upper East Side, especially where plenty of bulk has been added to buildings in, in, in low-rise and varied districts. What, what makes this one problematic for me is a couple of things. First of all, if the school wants to add in a historic district, in a historic area, they're going to have to compromise themselves, as well as asking the neighborhood and, and the district to compromise. And I think that the notion of exploring the courtyard is, should not be put off the table. We've seen churches in the last few months where structures have been put within ten feet or nine feet of, of existing windows, and that has been deemed acceptable for purposes to support the church's functions in that case. So I, I don't think that one must necessarily, look, we all love light and air, but I think that if it's the school that's looking to do an addition, and it's saying that this area or that area is off limits because of the need for light and air, I think that has to be questioned. I think it's reasonable to question that. I don't think that you should, I don't think it's necessary to close up necessarily the windows of any of the spaces that are part of this school slash church complex, but I think that the proximities of structures to those windows can be explored and could result in real estate that could be added to the building. With that, not only that, the, we, we see every week here at the commission cases where people dig down below one, two stories below existing townhouse structures, and I think that there would be ways to put some of the elements, and certainly they might not be as lovely as, as they're proposed, but an auditorium space need not always have windows, and I think it's great if it, if it does, like, that's that great room, which is like a tiered space. I, I'm not sure that it necessarily needs to have walkout access to the, to the, to the, to the yard, but, I mean, I guess that's not our purview in the end of the day, what the uses are, but I think that a school that has a very densely settled site could, could explore going down a bit more than this one, this one scheme has. And if those are explored, I think the need to go as intensely developed within and up could be mitigated. For instance, I don't recall ever seeing a project in my time here where we allowed somebody to gut historic townhouses and put floors in the middle of windows. Now granted, these floors wouldn't come to the windows.
If we did that, and I think on the Upper West, Upper East Side, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't remember seeing them, like, kind of come up to the windows. Well, it's, it's, it seems awfully rough here, and I understand the need for handicapped accessibility, I think that has to be accommodated, but, I mean, there is some space in the hallways for perhaps for ramps and/or lifts, and I think there, there might be ways to, to make it work. Maybe there wouldn't be... Maybe they wouldn't be optimal, maybe you'd do it in one case and not in the others, but I think that there must be a way to work it out for some of these levels, to allow for the retention of some of the floors, and that would take the pressure, again, off the rear facade. I mean, looking at this kind of building, if it were not a school, we would certainly say, you've got historic material here of a row of intact townhouses. We should try to keep it, especially when the only reason we're taking it is in order to push the, push the building away from the front wall in order to accommodate these, this kind of relationship. I think that the applicant's done great stuff to try to extend, to restore the existing townhouses, both the ground level and above. But I guess I'm curious as to why, in extending the Helmsley Building vertically, they weren't able to somehow try to integrate that vertical extension, the first floor of it, anyway, back in with the plane of the townhouses, which is, I don't know, it looks like a foot or two away from the plane of the Helmsley Building. It seems to me like an opportunity to re, or to at least gesture to the previous condition of that row with little sacrifice to the interior. I mean, I think that the bulkhead, as you mentioned, can easily be integrated within the body of the Helmsley Building for the upper floors, thus pushing the volume away. I personally could accept more height on the Helmsley Building if it were handled in such a way that allowed these other things to give both more distance from the historic buildings and less pressure on the townhouses.
I just wanted to say one thing to what you said, which is about sort of going below grade in the courtyard and reducing the bulk. I think, for me, the question for the commission is about whether that the bulk that they have is appropriate, it's masked appropriately, and that's what we should comment on, more so that just because they can do it, why don't they explore that? So, I think the more direction we're able to give the applicants into why we believe, because I've heard at least two commissioners comment that, or three, that the bulk is too much, or, you know, I don't know what that means, when bulk is too much, but there's at least an instinctive feeling that maybe it's too much for the overall ensemble, and it should be reduced, as opposed to, well, let's explore what you can do below grade, right?
I agree with that, and I guess I was just offering that as a way to kind of frame for myself, the fact that maybe they're not backed into the corner that they seem to be backed into, and that there may be other options. Not that they should consider anything that I would suggest, you know, but, yeah.
Right, 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 okay.
What do you call, I can't ask a question, right?
We actually haven't closed the hearing as yet.
We haven't closed the hearing. So, the element above which you have the Turrell Room, what do you call that? The whole, the whole volume.
Corner element.
It's not a corner.
A corner element. In our minds, it's replacing the bay windows. It's a kind of a modern version of the bay windows.
Right. I just, I don't know what, how exactly it is, it might be a solution, but I feel as though this, this element, and do you mind if we just go to the slide so we can just look at it? Let's say page.
Twelve.
Eleven. Page 11. Okay. So, I'm talking about that, what is this kind of new tower-ish thing that you have here? This piece? Which is a completely invented element, right? Maybe, maybe that's the part that can start to be kind of a key for sort of negotiating the passage, kind of the unlevelled floors. Maybe it can start to become kind of a real circulation hub. Maybe it can change in dimension to accommodate the, again, mediating the old structures of the townhouses and the newer building. I just, and, and maybe its height can shift a bit, because it's set back from the street, it's kind of object-like on the whole complex. And maybe that, you know, just to follow up on the chair's comment about direction, that it becomes, I think it hasn't been explored yet. We don't, I don't understand it in terms of the plan. It would need a completely new design, obviously, in order to understand it, but there might be something in that. Which is to say, I mean, the easier thing is to, you know, move all the floors out and make open spaces and recraft the whole inside of three townhouses, as well as the newer building. But if not that, then maybe this, this element can start to do it, and can get taller and can actually get programmed, so, I don't know.
All right, other comments? Yeah, okay.
I agree with some of the comments that are appearing now, but I think, for me, that the main issue is really, is there a way to have less intervention in the townhouses part? I understand the programmatic needs that drive building up and in and out and tearing out, but I wonder if there are other ways to get what you need without making all of the kinds of changes that you have to do right now in the three townhouses. So, I mean, yes, I am questioning, you know, the fact that you have to tear out and move back and drop down the floors. I mean, I understand that you want to connect it, but I'm wondering, too, if there are other ways to gain access to that area without having to make it maybe the exact same. And maybe there could be like an intermittent space that does those transitions instead, along the lines that I just mentioned. But I guess also the fact that the whole rear has to be changed. I guess I'm looking for less intervention in the townhouse part, if possible, and I'm willing almost to accept more in the Hunter, Hunter House, or whatever the other building is, Hunter Hall. I understand you have to get what you need for, to make your school work, but if it's the way, if there is a way to do it, then I think I would want to have that looked at again, just to see if there could be less intervention to achieve this in the townhouse part.
Okay. John?
For the sake of being completely contradictory, I tend to go along with Commissioner Bland's thoughts, which is to say, I'm okay with that fifth floor on the newer building, but if you killed the sixth and dropped the playground, play roof down, I think the view from Savison Park is the one that bothers me most. And, and that's, so if you drop off that floor and bring the playground down, that's step one. But step two is that glass transition building. You know, when it was originally built, you know, it was nestled neatly between the new structure and the old, and when you extend it up, it becomes, you know, frankly, an eyesore from the park. And so if, you know, when you drop that down, I realize it has to have some additional height, but I think you have to really look very, very carefully at the materials you use for that particular structure, because it's the thing that sort of will scream out at you when you're looking across from the park. So we call that the Gustafson Amendment to the Bland Plan.
Okay. So, are any other comments? Yes?
I think my comment is, I kind of agree with both sides, with Commissioner Washington's side. No, I agree, that the addition really has to be more on the new building, on the half swiv, on the middle hall building, and stay away from the townhouses, but they have to do something with those two pieces in between each of that. It's like the new building and the transitions at the ends, and somehow get rid of the glass thing, because it was just, the glass addition needs to just get added into something, because it's just out there and it doesn't match anything at all now. But there's got to be a way to do that. I'd even take more height. I am willing to accept the sixth floor on the new building, but not all of that on top of the townhouses, and try to save some of the back of the townhouses.
Okay. Other comments? All right, there's obviously various points of view here, but let me see if I can try and sum it up. Okay, clearly, look, I think there's a, I'm going to try, it may not capture everything, but I think one thing is that, at least there seems to be an overwhelming concern, I mean, overwhelming meaning a lot of the commissioners, that way overwhelming, that, that the visibility of what's happening in terms of the enlargement on the modern building and the, and its visibility from the park, its relationship to the historic building, the designated individual is of some concern. Now, there are options, or at least things to explore. One is exploring, removing a floor, and then, yeah, maybe taking up on some of the suggestions of reprogramming how the space is so that you capture it elsewhere, maybe below grade. So, you could, you could remove a floor, you could think about relocating or incorporating the glass structure that you have right now, so it sets away, and show that to the commission. I think, well, the commission will look at what it means in terms of the bulk. I think there are very mixed opinions, generally speaking, on two fronts, which is, well, should the big, modern building take all the bulk and do nothing to the, you know, to the other one? Or should it, we're okay with making changes to the historic row houses, but we don't want too much bulk in the modern building, because that's where it's visible. So I think we've heard both of those. I can't say what the resolution is, but I think my suggestion is to sort of explore maybe the nuance of what is being said, which is that the issue with the three townhouses is may not necessarily be just about bulk, but it's just about the intervention. And again, that has some options for you. It's, if you're going to take away the rear yard, what does it mean to the top of the building? If you're going to keep, so the rear wall, if you keep the rear wall, maybe you could keep more on top, but it's about sort of looking at the intervention on those three or four buildings, which are now just one, in some kind of holistic manner. And going to the modern building, I think it really is, it's exploratory for you to look at how to make the bulk look less, whether it's a removal of a floor, or amassing the building somewhat differently, or setting it back, but I think that's something that you should explore. And if you need to gain that space, then look at more creative solutions, which is about going below grade. No, no, okay, no. Even though you don't have to go to the full amount, but, or, or the other option is really looking at where your program can give in a little. So, you may not get everything that you want, but, you know, see what you can live with to actually get a better solution on the site. Okay? Is there any, yes?
I just wanted to say that my vote goes on the side of, in terms of trying to reduce the bulk, I actually would like to do more preservation of the townhouse and be willing to see more, you know, more of it, more of whatever the extension is on the more modern building, but, you know, not being an architect, I'm not sure what to recommend in terms of that, but I was looking to reduce the bulk and was willing to make some compromises on the entire bulk, if the only way to do it was to affect, but I'd prefer to affect the modern building, just, so that's kind of.
Okay. All right. Okay, anything else? Okay, yes, Ken.
If I have a comment. Though it's in a different district, it was reminding me of Washington Square, and NYU's buildings around Washington Square, where they picked up their historic townhouses on one side, and they put up Bost Hall and all these other buildings, and they haven't really tried to make the new buildings look like the old buildings, but the new buildings, you know, are very nicely, they're contextual in their own sense, though some, it's much higher zoning, yes, I do realize, it's much higher zoning, but I'm saying, you don't need to match it, but it does have to be contextual, you know, try to fit in with the scale of the neighborhood and react to the park, not just be on the block, react to the park and what's across the park also.
Okay. All right. So, we'll look forward to seeing you when you get back, and we can close the hearing.